All rise, hear ye, hear ye. Hamlin County Commission Meeting is now in session. The Honorable Howard Giffrey presiding. Please remain standing.
This time I'd like to call to order the April 22nd, 2021, meeting of the Hamlin County Legislative Body. I'm going to ask Commissioner Chris Cuthshaw to lead us as we pray, please.
Let us pray. Father God, as we come to you, Lord Jesus, the Author and the Prefector of our faith, God, we ask that you lead us in your ways and that we be restored where we fell. Father God, lead us as we pray for our country, for our state and our county. Lord God, that healing across this land may take place. We came through a tough time, Lord God, with this pandemic and so many people have hurt, have lost lives, have been affected in one way or the other. Father God, we just pray that your hand would reach down and protect us. Father, we pray for the leaders of our country and our state. And God, lead us as we come together to conduct the business of this county. We ask God for this guidance. We thank you for this day. We thank you for all you've done for us. Most of all, Father, we thank you for your Son, Jesus, and the salvation that he brings. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. I want to ask Commissioner Taylor Ward to lead us, please, in our pledge.
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republicans who put his hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. Want to remind all the commissioners to please turn your mics on and we'll do the roll call at this time. We do have a form present, so we're open for business. Our first item is nomination and appointments. Sheriff Jarnigan has nominated Sergeant Stephen Hague to take the place of the late Tom McKinney on the Work Release Commission appointment. We would entertain a motion to approve his...
I'll move it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a second to approve his appointment. All in favor, I think this is on board? Thomas, though. We're on board. Okay, let's vote a motion, please.
Fourteen yeas, zero noes.
Okay, the appointment is approved. At this time, the Chair will recognize Chairman Jim Step of the Calendar and Rules Committee.
Thank you, Chairman. Item 3A, approval of consent calendar items. Chairman, I put that in full of motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second to approve the consent calendar? We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote a motion, please.
Item 3A, fourteen yeas, zero noes.
The motion is approved.
Item 3B, approval of the regular calendar items. Chairman, I put that in full of motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote a motion, please.
Item 3B, fourteen yeas, zero noes.
Okay, the motion is approved.
All have, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Chairman Step. At this time, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Would you put that on the board, please? Okay, we have a motion on board, we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote a motion, please.
Item 4A, fourteen yeas, zero noes.
The motion is approved. At this time, we will entertain comments from the audience on items that are on the agenda only at this time. If you have some comments you'd like to share with the commission, please come to the podium at this time.
I'm holding 8150 West Point Drive. I want to talk about Fund 116, Sanitation and Garbage Department of $31,200. I know Barry was here last month. He was at the committee meeting talking about trucks being tore up when he goes to the landfill, where that they're so rough and everything. Well, I went to the Hamlin County Solid Waste Board meeting, which I go often. And I told Mr. Cox that it was causing... That Mr. Poole had said that the trucks were being tore up and the taxpayers were having to pay to have those trucks fixed because of their roads in the landfill. Mr. Cox replied back to me was... I told him that I thought that they should fix the roads so that the taxpayers wouldn't have to pay the $40,000 to $50,000 to get those trucks fixed. Because they are joint with us, you know, county and city. His reply back to me was, "I don't take secondhand information. You tell Mr. Poole," I said to him. So if Mr. Poole was here tonight, I would tell Mr. Poole, "Mr. Poole, how long has it been since you've been to the Solid Waste Board meeting to ask them to fix those trucks and to fix their roads so that your trucks won't be tore up and that the taxpayers don't have to pay for it? How many years has he been? Probably a couple of years since Mr. Poole's been there. He needs to go and talk to them. They won't listen to me." But I did tell Mr. Cox, "Hey, I'm a taxpayer. I've got a right to tell you anything I want to you, especially if it deals with the county and the city. Because the city affects the county also, whether you believe it or not. Have a good night."
Thank you very much for your comments. Glenn, anyone else who wishes to address the body?
My name is Lyndon Oe, 2343 Joe Stevens Road. I'd like to address the jail. I hope, against hope, that you will not approve any contracts, any property agreements, anything related to the jail until you know what you're going to do for certain. The other item I would like to mention is... This is from Esco Jarnigan, a quote that he... A comment that he made. Having 15 years of daily operational jail experience, my opinion is that the one-level jail is the most practical ideal. My opinion addresses very important issues such as the extreme cost, location, safety, staffing, and being landlocked. My suggestions were never taken seriously and were repeatedly rejected by the governing body, which of course is their right. Having the right to do something and doing something that is wise is sometimes different. And believe me, I hate to keep coming up here. It's no fun seeing the attitude and seeing the reluctance to... The lack of open-mindedness, the refusal, the refusal to have a study done comparing the costs, the safety, and the staffing of a one-level stacking pods versus the four-level jail that is currently on the board. I compared a little bit. I know that Mr. Britton has said, you know, "Oh, well, I'm working on money. We can get this, we can get that." That ignores the point. Maybe I could scramble up a bunch of money and purchase a Mercedes. Why would I do that? If something less expensive works just as well for my needs. And so why would you build this Taj Mahal? And particularly, why would you gut it and build it? As opposed to looking at other options? All this money coming in could be used for roads. Of course, the schools are getting their own money. But there are many uses for it besides throwing it at a Taj Mahal jailed just so you can say, "We did it." Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else who wishes to address the commission? Yes.
My name's Edna Green. I live at 4981 Cameron Road. I live in the 14th District of Hamlin County. We have more needs than a fancy four-story Taj Mahal. When I sat in the meeting the other night, your bids were way above what you folks projected and the mayor projected they would be. Now, I'm not very smart, but I can add and subtract. You're digging a hole that my great-great-grandchildren will be paying for tonight. And for any of you that got kids or grandchildren, you're going to be in the same boat. Do you really want to burden them with this? Now, I know that several of you have not looked at the one-level jails that would be safer for the inmates, safer for our officers who do an outstanding job in Hamlin County. We're blessed with some of the best officers we could have. But they deserve the right to be safe. So do the inmates. Our jail, we definitely need a jail. It is the filthiest place I've ever seen in my life. And be honest, well, if you kept your dog in a place like that, sir, they'd take you to jail. So my question is, when are you folks going to wake up? I know we have three that have woke up and have been consistent in standing up for the citizens of Hamlin County. The rest of you, when you going to wake up? When are you going to listen? When are you going to take a look at what the final cost is? You folks ain't even discussed staffing, and that's a big-ticket item. And if you doubt what I'm telling, ask your mayor. He deals with it enough to know. But I'd really appreciate it if you would develop some common sense. Look, sense is great, but common sense is fantastic. And if there aren't one of you that can prove to me that this monstrophacity that you've got laid out before us would work, I'd love to see it. The mayor corrected me the other night going down from the meeting that it wasn't a four-level jail. Then the newspaper come out that it was. I'd just like to know who knows what they're talking about. Because evidently, somebody doesn't. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else who wishes to address the commission?
Arrowhead, Woodrow Road, Moorestown. I was at the last committee meeting and seen some discussion going on then on the jail. Mosley was up here. Mr. Hohn put that man on the spot, asked a question about the exterior of the building. Told him, "Yeah, you know, we can redesign this. We can redesign that, we can get the cost down." Well, that man talked a deer caught in headlights when Mr. Hohn asked him a question out of the blue. And I appreciated that. He started digging and asked him questions. Myself, I was sitting there going, "Why wouldn't that done to start with if it could cut the cost? Why wouldn't it in the original design and bring that cost down?" Mosley's up here wanting to sell you a building. And they're bringing you experts. They're hard gun. Did you expect him to walk up here and say, "Oh, our four-level design sucks"? He's going to... They're trying to sell you a building. Of course, he's going to back it up. But y'all are not digging for other people to come here and give you a contrasting opinion. You go over here to a trial, you got a jury. The state brings on an expert witness. The defense can bring in an expert, get contrasting opinions, and then the jury can make an informed decision. And why aren't y'all doing that? Seek out other advice. Seek out other experts. Hear something contrasting, hear another side. Then you can make an informed decision. Because there's a lot of us out here that feel like you haven't done that. And y'all are going to spend on the biggest chunk of money that's ever been spent in the history of this county. And that's our money. And we want to make sure that it goes the right way. And we don't feel that y'all are doing that right now. Mosley, we're not arguing that to build a jail. Yeah, we agree to build one. But we believe there's a cheaper way, a better way, a more efficient way, a safer way. Instead, you listen to Mosley's expert when you have a sheriff that all of you've known that's told you, "Don't do this." And you ignore the man you know and listen to this guy you've known a couple of months. He's God, and he's not. He's a hard gun. You need to seek out another viewpoint and get some more input before you take another step forward. Because every time you take another step forward, you're digging that hole deeper. You're in a hole. Best thing to do, stop digging first. Slow down, get some more input, get some contrasting views, and figure out what we need to do before we take another step forward on anything.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone... Yes, sir, back there in the back.
Good evening, commission. My name is Chris Black. I reside at 7335 Evelyn Circle, Talbot, in the 13th District. I want to speak a little bit on this jail issue. It's truly bothersome to me, to be quite honest with you. I've lived in this county all of my life with the extension of one year in Oxford, Mississippi, at Ole Miss School of Law. I'm pretty familiar with the legal system, pretty familiar with public policy. I have three degrees in it, the equivalent of a doctorate. Guys, this is not going to work. I plead with you. This is not going to work. You know, good public policy is often founded, or should be founded, on facts and quality research. Of course, your jail study commission has done that, and I admire that. That shows a good faith effort to serve the people of this county. However, every four years, you guys appear before the voters of this county. You're members of my political party. We all know that one party controls this commission. And quite frankly, every four years, you promise the people of this county that you're going to vote and act in a manner as to keep our taxes low and to spend consciously rather than reactively. This Justice Center project, I understand we do need to do jail. I think anybody in this county of over 65,000 residents knows that. However, a four-story jail probably isn't the best way to go about it, and it darn sure isn't the best way to go about it to put it in the center of this town. I know that we have our Justice Center in the center of town. Of course, when Moorestown was planned and when the Justice Center was built, it was probably the only place we had. But guys, we've got to look at something more cost-efficient. You know, promises. I keep going back to this whole promise issue. Every four years, you make a promise to keep our taxes low and act consciously. Promises around here are a bit like wooden pencils. We all aim not to break them. But dad gummit, a lot of people think y'all break a whole lot of them and it's no big deal. And I know that you guys don't mean to do it. I know that most of the time. You have to do what you've got to do to keep this county running. But guys, come on. Go back to the drawing board on this. I know it's going to cost us some money to do this. I know that. But let's do something that we can get the majority of the people around. Because if you don't, I'm afraid of next year what's going to happen in the ballot box. But beyond the ballot box, because politics are simply politics, I'm afraid of the burden that you're going to put on the taxpayers of this county for the years to come. Again, try not to break any more promises that you've made to the people of this county. I know that it's not haunted you in the past because we keep electing you. I get that. But there's a tide coming, and it's coming fast. And I don't know how much longer we, as members of the GOP, are going to be able to hold this tide off. Keep in mind, people can primary you. People can run as independents. In fact, I know one person's thinking about running as an independent right now. You're listening to him.
Thank you, Chris. We appreciate your comments. Anyone else who wishes to address the commission? Seeing none, then we'll move on to our finance committee. Chairman DeBoer?
Thank you, got another one I heard.
My name's Scott Cuthshaw. I live at 1336 Brookfield Drive, Moorestown, Tennessee. You know, the situation that we're facing right now is cutting back and cutting down and changing. Going to take the courtrooms out, is what I've heard. Going to change the floor plan that's been drawn, get the architect, redesign some things. You know, two years ago, I was talking to you about this. That piece of property that y'all got over there that you're trying to put a jail and a justice center on... Excuse me, I ran up here. Was voted on by the commission, the previous commission, to build a jail on, not to build a jail and a justice center. If y'all step back and take a look at it, y'all could build a jail on the piece of property that you've got right there. And then as time goes on, when you get that jail built, you could build a justice center down there on the end of it, make it an L shape. You could put a sheriff's department right there in that corner. Y'all keep using the same piece of property that you dug in and said that that's the only piece of property in Hamlin County that you can build a daggone jail on, excuse me. Now, to me, that is a piece of property up on 25E behind the VFW. I've talked to them people behind the VFW that live in that little subdivision. Said they would welcome a jail up on that corner, eleven and a half acres. You could build whatever you wanted to up there. The people would like to have the justice center and the jail up there to have a police presence because of the motel that's right across the street from it, where we have all the drugs and the prostitutes and all the illegal stuff going on in Hamlin County. But nobody wants to step back and take a look at the future. We want to take care and address this situation today, right now, and you're going to do it the way you want to do it. And damn the taxpayer. We need to think about our kids and our grandkids and our great-grandkids. What kind of burden are you going to lay on them by stubbing up, cutting back, and cutting down, and going back and changing everything to keep that same piece of property that you've already built three jails on that wasn't big enough in the first place? Instead of making one generation might get mad at you for building it next to them, but your kids and your grandkids will say, "Boy, that was a smart county commission. They made a right decision. And they put this to where we can expand on it and this county can grow, and it's not a money pit on the taxpayers." Just think about it. Step back. Sometimes, you know, old Will Rogers had the best saying. He said, "When you find yourself in a hole, stop digging." And that's all we're doing with this situation right here. It's just digging a deeper hole. And it's costing the taxpayers every dime. Just think about it. Our futures are entrusted in you all. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Now, is there anybody else who wishes to speak before we go on to our business? All right, public comments are closed. Chairman DeBoer, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 6A is the approval of the monthly checks, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote a motion, please.
Item 6A, fourteen yeas, zero noes.
The motion is approved.
Item 6B, annual debt report for fiscal year ending June 30th of 2021. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote a motion, please.
Item 6B, fourteen yeas, zero noes.
The motion is approved.
Item 6C, Resolution 2103, Resolution of the County Commission of Hamlin County, Tennessee, authorizing issuance, sale, and payment of Hamlin County Interfund Loan Capital Outlay Series 2021 not to exceed $300,000. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote a motion, please.
Item 6C, fourteen yeas, zero noes.
The motion is approved.
Item 6D, renewal of Hamlin County Sheriff's Department slip and mooring lease agreement for Hamlin County Marine. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote a motion, please.
Fourteen yeas, zero noes.
The motion is approved.
Item 6E, grant funds awarded from Tennessee Risk Management Trust. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote a motion, please.
Item 6E, fourteen yeas, zero noes.
The motion is approved.
Item 6F1, Fund 101, Sheriff's Department for $3,000. That's for SCUBA certification. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote a motion, please. Mr. Ward, you need a vote.
Item 6E1, fourteen yeas, zero noes.
The motion is approved.
Item 6F2, Fund 101, Sheriff's Department, and that's for repayment of the cameras. Put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote a motion, please.
Item 6F2, fourteen yeas, zero noes.
The motion is approved.
Item 6F3, Fund 101, Sheriff's Department and Courtroom Security for $5,100. That's for overlapping assignment of a partial year for employee. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote a motion, please.
Item 6F3, fourteen yeas, zero noes.
The motion is approved.
Item 6F4, Fund 101, purchasing of $1,756. That's for advertisement transferred from the accounting department. So I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote a motion, please. Eileen.
Oh, sorry.
Item 6F4, fourteen yeas, zero noes.
The motion is approved.
Item 6F5, Fund 101, Trustees Office for a new employee, $8,503. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote a motion, please.
Item 6F5, fourteen yeas, zero noes.
The motion is approved.
Item 6F6, Fund 101, County Mayor's Office for Liability Claims of the Jail. That's $60,500, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote a motion, please.
Item 6F6, fourteen yeas, zero noes.
The motion is approved.
Item 6F7, Fund 101, County Mayor for $541.43. That's from Rick Eldridge, and it's for box lunches. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please. Mr. Hohn.
Item 6F7, fourteen yeas, zero noes.
The motion is approved.
Item 6F8, Fund 101, planning for $7,010. And that's for a new employee with overlapping partial year. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote a motion, please.
Item 6F8, fourteen yeas, zero noes.
The motion is approved.
Item 6F9, Fund 101, Election Commission. And this is for a replacement for a new employee. It's $11,710. It's $11,710. I put it in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote a motion, please.
Item 6F9, fourteen yeas, zero nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 6F10, Fund 116 for sanitation garbage, Department 31,200 for maintenance of vehicles, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote a motion, please.
Item 6F10, thirteen yeas, one abstain.
The motion is approved.
Item 611, Fund 122 for drug enforcement of $1,500, and that's appropriation from confiscated items that were sold, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote a motion, please.
Item 6F11, fourteen yeas, zero nae.
The motion is approved.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman. De Board, this time we recognize Chairman, the Board of the Personnel Committee.
Item 7A, the provision to longevity pay policy, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote a motion, please.
Item 7A, sixteen yeas, zero nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 7B, revision to health insurance eligibility for pre-age 65 retirees, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote a motion, please.
Item 7B, fourteen yeas, zero nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 7C, COVID-19 leave policy revision, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote a motion, please.
Item 7C, fourteen yeas, zero nae.
The motion is approved.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman. De Board, at this time, the Chair will recognize Chairman Tim Goins of the Public Service Committee.
Thank you, Chairman. Item 8A, surplus item from the Hamlin County Highway Department, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote a motion, please.
Item 8A, thirteen yes, one no.
The motion is approved.
Item 8B, recommendation for the Morstan-Hamlin GIS for street naming, Westview Middle Road. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote a motion, please.
Item 8B, fourteen yeas, zero nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 8C, request to prohibit swimming at boat ramp at Cherokee Park, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Wayne Neesmith, you're recognized.
Who, uh, who's going to enforce this, Howard?
I understand that the Sheriff's Department will enforce it. That's what we were told at our committee meetings.
Sheriff's Department's going to enforce swimming at the boat dock. TWRA, isn't it?
This is the boat ramp.
Boat ramp. Still TWRA. Or still, uh, the government owns the lakes, TVAs, and you know.
I think once it's posted, though, I think that, uh, either one can do the enforcement of it.
So the sheriff's going to enforce it.
That's what we were told.
How much more is that going to cost us to enforce that?
Well, they didn't indicate that it would cost us anything, that they, you know, we'll call them and they will respond.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the Sheriff's Department patrols that Point 20 down through there regularly, and they'll enforce it. And TWRA does not enforce our regulations on the Cherokee Park boat ramps. They do on all the other TWRA boat ramps, but not ours. The county's responsible for that.
Is it, well, let's fall right in the sheriff's regular cycle where he goes around and checks it on his, his routine?
And then call.
Or somebody going to call him and tell you, "Eight guys down here swimming off the ramp."
There could be, the problems we've had, and there've been calls to 911 when fishermen have either wanted to get out of the lake or go into the lake with their boats, they called 911 to have the Sheriff's Department come out there to try to clear the boat ramp, and they don't, right now, they don't have any authority. There's no county commission regulation that allows them or authorizes them to enforce anything. So that's why we were asking this to be passed, so the Sheriff's Department can enforce it.
I'd like to see it's going to take more manpower to enforce this thing.
Okay, any more discussion? Seeing none, let's vote a motion, please.
Item 8C, thirteen yeas, one nae.
The motion is approved.
Chairman, that's all I have.
Thank you, Chairman Goins. At this time, the Chair will recognize Chairman Tim Horner of the Justice Center Jail Project Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. 9B, bid tabulation, special inspections, and material testing for the Justice Center. This will allow myself and the mayor to negotiate a price, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote a motion, please.
Item 9A, twelve yeas, two nae.
The motion is approved.
9B, property transfer agreement between Hamlin County Government and McNabb Center, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Neesmith, you're recognized.
Uh, on this, our jail's on hold right now. We've got it on hold so we can find more money or whatever we're going to do about it. So we won't be doing anything down at behind Helen Ross McNabb's. Maybe that might be a good time to get us a quote on how much this is going to cost the county to do what we're supposed to be doing for Helen Ross McNabb. Bulldozer work, new fence, whatever other items were. Right now, we're just going in and I said, "Yeah, we're going to do it. We're going to pay to get it fixed," without knowing what the cost is. So I think now would be a good time to send somebody down there, get some bids out, "Look, we want you to, we want to dig this hole. We want it so deep, so wide, and so long. We want you to fix the yard behind Helen Ross McNabb, make it look pretty, and then put some bushes out there and put some grass on it." It's all going to cost, and I look at cost. So that's my comments.
All right, anyone else? Seeing none, let's vote a motion, please.
Item 9B, nine yeas, five nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 9C, the Justice Senate Center project bids, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote a motion, please. Mr. Ward.
Item 9C, eleven yeas, three nae.
All right, the motion is approved.
That's all I have, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman Horner. At this time, the Chair will entertain comments from the public, and at this time, I want to recognize Randy Corleau. Randy, you'll have three minutes to address your concern. Randy, if you don't care, could you take your mask off, speak to us so we can hear you? Thank you.
Randy Corleau, 376 Lockmere Drive. I represent a client who bought a piece of property about a year ago, and it's been like quack-a-mole. Every time he gets ready to do something, something pops up, deed mistakes and other things. Right now, we're at a cross because it's in the urban growth boundary, and everybody wants to hand it off to somebody else. The problem is, and what I've got before you, I'm going to show you, but basically, he bought this piece of property with the intent of residential. And if you look at the second page, you'll see where we worked out a plan over a year ago that we could sewer the property, but we'd have to come out of Hampton West. And if you look at the far right, which is Bellwood Road, we had to go a lot deeper because to go down far enough to get deep enough, we had that problem. The third page, I'm going to turn your attention to with color, is a picture that after the client and I talked, he wanted to put multi-residential up on the upper portion, and he had the small right-hand building in the upper right-hand corner. He wanted to put climate-controlled self-storage because of all the apartments that are down on Bellwood Road, thinking that that would be necessary. He didn't want to tear down the white building that was a warehouse originally. It wasn't zoned that way. Then he had it built. This was discussed with the chief planner at City of Marstown after an industrial board meeting in February. Mr. Poole and the client and I went out, met on the property. Height Road, there was a lot of discussion whether Height Road existed north of the property. Look at the last page. And as it turns out, two driveways are there, but basically, what we've shown and proven combined the two driveways, is going to allow the access to the property owner at the far end. Combine it all and work it out, and at some point, we would do some residential. Now, this was marked up in February, right after the meeting, that said, "Well, that's probably not a problem on that." We applied to the County Commission Plan Department for a PUD, Public Utility District, or Plan Unit Development, I'm sorry. When that was submitted, it then had to go to the Urban Growth Committee, which said, "We would recommend you call this commercial because we don't have PUDs in Hamlin County." You do. Look at your zoning requirements. You've had one for a long time. I actually talked to Ms. Whitaker, and she said, "Well, the reason PUDs never worked is because it has no access to sanitary sewer." So I was not even informed by the staff, I'm sorry I'm going to run out of time, but that they were going to deny it based on their own recommendation because it was spot zoning. Now, I practiced engineering for 40 years, and I know what spot zoning is. And the warehouse there and one of the trailers down below it is marked "commercial," "residential." I was told, "Well, that's all right. You can go to the County Commission today, and they can approve it for you."
Could you let him continue?
I'm sorry.
Could we let him continue just a moment?
Does the Chair, does the Commission wish to let him continue speaking? If so, raise your hand.
Yes.
Okay, continue speaking.
Thank you, sir. All right, so even though one gentleman knew that there had been discussion about residential, he remained quiet. And based on the information that the City Planning Commission had, they thought we were spot zoning. I've talked to Chairman McGuffin, Commissioner Kinnearly. They both were saying, "Isn't there some residential component?" "Yes, there is." Now, like I said, that second page showed the discussion that we worked on. Now, what you've got in front of you was my draftsman marked up what I had done in February. But at this point in time, Mr. Chairman, we don't know whether, you know, the city was saying, "We'd like to have a recommendation from the Planning Commission from Hamlin County." Well, the regulation and procedures we're using is, excuse us in French, the BASS Act. It went to the city who wanted a recommendation for the county, so now it's been turned down. And then I was told, "I'm on the agenda tonight." Not on the agenda, was totally surprised, so that you could vote it up or down. Now, the planning commission meets on the first Monday of the month. I'd like to think that at least somehow, this body could give a recommendation back to the city since it's an urban growth. Right now, this is one of the first pieces of property that's kind of in between. It's in a twilight zone. And everybody wants to hand it off to somebody else. In the meantime, the property owner is frustrated, has ordered stuff, thinking that we got one thing, and we get blindsided. So we were hoping that we were on the agenda. Again, I was misinformed by the staff member that said, "That's all right. The County Commission could do it." Since you didn't have a knowledge of it, it's not on the agenda tonight, and we've got another delay that continues to happen that could be providing tax revenue and providing a service to all the apartments that are up and down that road. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Randy.
Got a question. Randy, does that go out next to that trailer park?
Yes, sir. In fact, Mr. Neesmith, this is how many plans that we've run through trying to work on that. And the trailer park needs a lot of help, but unfortunately, even though I filled out the form and went on property tax data, it showed all of them are residential but one. It said residential commercial. But as far as the City Planning Commission members, they saw a map that showed a spot zoning for that one little building, and it was all residential. So again, we've got kind of a gray area. You know, this is something that's supposed to, we're supposed to be able to work together. And we've got to have some coordinated way because this man now is going to be approaching, if I have to wait till the next time you all meet to overrule something, if we don't give a recommendation back to the urban growth plan, you've caused this man five months of delay and given false impressions that everything's fine. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, this warehouse is there. Is that?
There was a white warehouse.
Charles Moyers.
Yes.
Charlie Moyers, where he kept dog food.
That's right, yeah. And actually, when the gentleman bought the property, it was two tracks. That was a separate track from the other. So I mean, you know, was it residential? Was it commercial? You know, are we spot zoning? Are we trying to do an improvement that if we could have done the PUD would have worked better? And it's, as a professional, I don't see a lot of problems with this in other communities. I have one community very close to here said, "Hey, this project we've got, let's do a mixed-use development." It fits, and we've not had one of those yet. And yet, we're supposed to be the most progressive, seem to be the most backwards in knowing how to coordinate bodies. So again, I came here tonight hoping that y'all could do something. Again, you weren't advised to put on your genitals, and so we're delaying the man again.
Okay, how many people, how many people do you think might be, if you build houses, what's your backup plan on that?
The first plan that was on the second page, that was apartments and multi-housing. That could have been as many as 60 units. Then, what I showed in the colored one on that second page, that was triplexes. And that still could provide good affordable housing to people at a moderate income or just starting out. Right now, the client is saying, "Maybe I need to do modular homes if that's going to work." But again, he's trying to get some direction and some approval, and when I'm dealing with the staff, I'm getting two different stories, even to the fact that, "That's all right. The County Commission can change this if they want to tonight." And yet, it's not even on your agenda.
And you're going to be putting a sewer in?
Well, that's another thing. We have outside sewer rates, okay? Now, Ms. Whitaker has said, "PUDs have always failed in the county because they don't have access to sewer." When the client looked at the cost of putting in septic fills versus sewer that's right next door to him, if it would be allowed, he could get more density up there and a better product than what we got. But again, are you left? Are you right? I don't know. You know, the Abbott-Costello, you know, who's on first? I don't know, third base. That's kind of what we've got. That's kinda what we've got right now because we're in this urban growth boundary.
I know you don't, probably don't wanna do this, but has anybody asked the city if they could be annexed?
Well...
They don't wanna be annexed.
Well, you know, all of a sudden now, they've gotta be responsible for repairing Bellwood Road from where the city stops all the way up there to that, and that's just another cost. I mean, it's almost like, does the county want to force people into the city, or do we use the urban growth to do the thing it's supposed to do and make a planned growth And I was very surprised by what happened. Mr. McGuffin and I have had several discussions, and he felt like that there should've been at least a heads up that even though the staff said, "Let's call it for rezoning," they didn't even call and give me a heads up so that we could maybe make a change or give something to the commissioners so they could hear the true story.
Mr. Corleau.
Yes.
Apologies that we didn't know about it until you were here tonight.
Yes.
That's the first we heard, but yet, when it was in the urban growth boundary, that's why the city was involved first. Is that correct? So, now, it's bouncing back to us, and it'll probably end up going through the Planning Commission and then come back before this body, is my assumption here. Now, I could be wrong, but also, because of rezoning, we may have to look at public notices and those type of things. So, we're trying to do our proper work and proper channels and get this taken care of.
Well, I appreciate that, Commissioner Cutsaw. And what was really interesting was listening to all the members of that commission saying, "Well, what's the county want?" And so, that's where I think we really maybe need to have, when there's something in an urban growth boundary, both staffs and the developer ought to be able to sit down and talk through.
Sure.
Because obviously, communication that I thought was going to all bodies either had selective memory or it just got ignored.
In this coming month's Planning Commission, it may have been talked about it, but until I saw you here tonight, I had not, other than the newspaper article, didn't know anything about it.
Are there any other questions? I'd be happy to answer.
Hopefully, we can deal with this next month.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
I'm sorry for the delay, but it's beyond our control right now because of the public hearing.
Well, you know, my daddy always said, "If you don't make people aware of the issues, they'll keep going on."
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to address the Commission? Yes, ma'am.
Anne Horn, 5 Panther Creek Road. I would like to address something that was not on the agenda tonight. For those of you who voted no on the beer permit, your job as commissioner is not to come in here and vote your moral and self-righteous beliefs. Your job is to vote the way the law says. If you don't want to vote on these things, then you don't need to be on County Commission because obviously, that's part of your job. And for those who say that the store was in too close to a neighborhood, aren't all the convenience stores here in town close to a neighborhood? Is that not the definition of a convenience store? You don't get to come in here and push your religious beliefs and your moral beliefs on the rest of the citizens. If you wanna do that, you need to do it outside of the Commission, and you need to do your job in here. And also, I see that you, most of you voted to continue with this travesty of a jail. I don't appreciate it. We're in here speaking, and you're not in here representing us.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else who wishes to address the Commission? Yes, ma'am.
Bonnie Ballington, 317 Stubblefield Street, Whitesburg. I'm not even gonna talk about the jail tonight because I have another problem, and that's with the Rules Committee. You set up this committee to try to figure out the rules, mostly for us on this side, so you could make sure that we were controlled, and that's fine. But who watches the watchers? What happens when one of you do something or say something that's abhorrent to us? What recourse do we have? We can't have you kicked from the meeting. Are we just to sit and take things? And I will go further and say this, one of your appointed members of the Rules Committee, Nancy Phillips, made some really harsh statements about the taxpayers, calling them asses and bitches. And she sat there on the Rules Committee, and she told the committee that it was up to them to enforce the rules. But what recourse do we have to take her to task when she goes out and says something like that and then lies and says that she never made the remarks, and we have the screenshots to prove it? I don't appreciate it, and there's a whole lot of people in Hamlin County that didn't appreciate her remarks, and we really feel like she should be removed because she's a travesty on your Rules Committee. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
My name's Edna Green. I'd like to add my voice to Ms. Bonnie's. I know for a fact that Ms. Nancy Phillips' boss is here tonight, so let me be quite evident. Each and one of you, as well as I am, are bound by standard. If you treat anybody less than a standard, there's something wrong with you, okay? Same's true for me. If I treat only one of you less than what I treat anybody I go to church with, there's something wrong. I should be the same here as I am in the church house, and if you disagree, fine. Catch me at the meeting. Talk to you about it. Ain't a bit of shit I can tell you. Not afraid of you, but respect goes both ways. We need to respect the position that yuns have, even though most, a lot of y'all wouldn't have voted for it, particularly my representative, to be perfectly honest with you, because she's failed to vote like I feel like the citizens would be best interest. But we still need to be treated with respect. We don't need anybody to throw anything at us, and yes, I do worry about it. I can't run now. And that was a good joke at the House, but it's the truth here. But we deserve to be treated to like human beings and talked to like human beings. I'm not barking at anybody tonight. I'm expressing a view. I'm not throwing anything at either one of yuns out of respect. Yes, I don't approve of the way you talk, the way you act, or what you do, and I pray to God that yuns can wake up before the college yuns home. Wouldn't swap shoes with several of you for anything because I know what I face God for, and I've got enough, but I wouldn't represent people like some of you have had done. And you need to know that some of your neighbors think quite poorly of you, and don't call on them because they don't wanna help. I, for one, my commissioner's family, unfortunately, but I'll stand and tell you, we need to do what's right for Hamlin County. It's not what I want, it's not what you want, what's best for Hamlin County, what's best for the people that are coming up behind us. Some of this old folks won't be here, but they'll be paying the bill that yuns are gonna saddle 'em with. We need roads. There are a lot of other things we need tonight. College Mahal ain't the only thing we need, and I seriously wonder why you folks won't take a look, take a trip to Covey County. It's not that bad. I made the trip. And I'll tell you, I was impressed with the safety. I was impressed with the money, too, the savings, and that is the name of the account. Yuns are supposed to be good stories. Three of you are extremely good stories. The rest of you, I wonder about you, but that's one you and God will answer for, not me. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else who wishes to address a body?
Chris Black again. Most of you know me, and this is just a procedural matter that I'd like to address the Commission on here tonight. I filed numerous public records requests with both the City of Morristown and with Hamlin County government over the past month, in addition to the University of Tennessee, to try to get a copy of the proposed charter for the Morristown-Hamlin County Metropolitan Government as adopted by the Morristown-Hamlin County Metropolitan Government Charter Commission in 1978. Now, last week, when I went to the city, they weren't too willing to play ball with me, even though this is a matter of public record. I'm coming to the County Commission tonight to ask if somebody here can help me get in touch with UT's Municipal Technical Advisory Service or County Technical Advisory Service to get a copy of this public record. I'm not asking for Metropolitan Government in this county yet, but I would at least like to know what it might look like for Morristown and Hamlin County as this charter would do. So, again, I'm simply asking for help from our Commission to try to at least get a copy to review. I don't know if we have one here at the courthouse. I kinda doubt it, but however I can get the help, I'm willing to take it. Thank y'all so much for what you do, even though I don't agree with most of you. Y'all know that, and y'all don't agree with me most of the time, and I respect that, but thank you for what you do. God bless you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Wayne Holden. I'd like to have a one-level jail. I'm a taxpayer. I want my money saved. I didn't want a jail at all, but the way that one looks over there, we need one, but I'd like to have a one-level jail. And if y'all care anything about the taxpayers, you all will check it out about a one-level jail. And I'm not saying it because ESCO said it. I'm saying it because I want a one-level jail. I wanna save money. You all oughta wanna save money because your grandkids and kids are gonna spend it whether you do or not. Why don't you save money? Learn how to save money.
There, Wardwood Road, Morristown. I wanna follow along with what Bonnie said about the Rules Committee. Nancy Phillips stopped me right out here in front of this courthouse and proceeded to chew me up one side and down the other. And stood right there and told me that the mayor had called her and asked her to be on that committee. Swin's mayor make appointments, committee appointments. I thought y'all were supposed to be doing that. But the man in here, I don't know his last name, I think it was Charlie, recommended that y'all form that Rules Committee. He clearly said, "You need to get one of these people, half-citizens up here." So, then the mayor goes and handpicks. We walk in here, "Here's your citizens," who he handpicked. That never should've been done like that. Y'all should've set up and had a discussion. You know who's record here and who isn't. Y'all should've sat here and debated among yourselves and picked somebody here that who's at these meetings all the time and said, "Come up here and join us. Let's talk about this," instead of going out and handpicking people who I've never seen in one of these committee meetings, former government officials. Are these common citizens like they're supposed to be? And one of these common citizens makes public remarks, calling people the names that Bonnie told you about, undeniable proof of it, and then has the nerve to come and say, "I never said it." Here it is where you said it. Here's where you said you didn't. I was recently called a liar online. I proved then that I didn't after these jail bids come out, but you just out and out, bold-faced lied. Yes, you did say it. Here's the proof of it. Yet, y'all would do nothing about it. How are we supposed to have any faith in y'all when you won't stand up and call out something like that? I emailed each one of you. I did get a response from Ms. Arwine, if I don't pay attention to social media. Got one from Chris. "I'm evaluating the situation." It was only Mr. Holmes who stood up and said, "This, don't cut it, and I recommend she resign." Mr. Neesmith, he didn't email me, but he did call me. That's wrong. That should never be allowed. You had two people who took a stand and said, "No, this ain't right." What happened to the rest of y'all? Y'all agree that something like that's right? And then you wonder why we don't have no more faith in y'all in what we do? If you want us to have faith in you and have respect in you, then be willing also to stand up and call out one of your own when they're wrong. If you're not willing to do that, we see hypocrisy, and we're not gonna have respect for somebody who does stuff like that.
Thank you. This lady back here been wanting to speak.
Mayor and the County Attorney. Barbara Lockhart, 4381 Hibiscus Drive. I'd like to address something that Mr. Corleau brought up, if I may. Is that all right?
Yeah.
Okay. My home is right, right close to where he's talking about the piece of property, okay? I mean, I can see it from my front yard, okay? It's right next to me, okay? North Bellwood Road is a very narrow road, gets a lot of traffic, especially since Carlisle built his apartments there. There's a lot more traffic than there's ever been. I've lived up there since 76. Now, you're wanting to put a commercial property or maybe more homes, apartments, whatever, there's gonna be even more traffic on that little bitty road. We don't need that much more traffic on that little road, and none of us in that neighborhood want to be annexed into the city. We fought that off over 30 years ago, and we will fight it off again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Hearing no other comments then? Want to remind Commissioners and our audience of our committee meetings, Monday, May the 10th, 5:30 here in this room, and then our May Commission Meeting, Thursday, May the 20th, here in the large courtroom. Thank you.
Mr. Shippard. I've got two things I'd like to be real quick. Do we have a meeting with a jail study on the 26th? Has that been canceled?
No, we don't. It's been...
That's been canceled.
Yeah, he never did call for it.
Okay, the next thing we've got, we've got a Hamlin County Citizen Survey that's due tomorrow, or 23rd, and all I've got these are Gmails. It's got, you know, "How do you rate schools, the Health Department, and all that," but I talked to Bill about it. Two of the most important things that I see affect Hamlin County wasn't even on that list, and he said, "Well, you can add those to it." And those two things were roads and debris pickup. So, you've still got time to do it, to turn it in, but it's...
Okay, thank you, Wayne. Anyone else? We stand adjourned.